Okay, all right, it's not conditioning. Oh, yeah.
We'll try to keep it short.
I know, you can go back to the air conditioning.
Thank you. Okay, my name is Paula Edwards and I'm co-chair of Voter Services for Holland Area's League of Women Voters. And we welcome you to this evening's candidate event. One of the League's most important goals is to assist voters in making informed choices at the polls. So we're proud to offer this opportunity to vote for voters in Ottawa County to learn more about the individuals running for office in the primary election on August 6th and in the general election on November 5th. So tonight's event is a meet and greet for candidates for Ottawa County Commission Districts 8 and 11 and for the county treasurer's seat. Each candidate will make a four-minute statement, or up to four-minute statement, to introduce themselves and share their reasons for running and goals for the position. Following the statements, we'll go back to the main brewery where the candidates will have an opportunity to talk with voters individually and where it's air-conditioned. You'll be able to ask questions of the candidates and get to know them a little bit better when we move out there. So the League of Women Voters in the Holland area provides this forum as an opportunity for candidates to express their views related to their candidacy. Statements expressed by the candidates are not endorsed nor opposed by the League. Also, the League does not certify candidate responses that those questions, the responses are accurate. So voters are encouraged to do their own fact-checking. So we've reserved the brewery for one hour from 6:30 to 7:30, and that's when we need to dismantle our tables. But of course, you're welcome to stay for dinner or beverages. So the League of Women Voters is a strictly nonpartisan organization that encourages informed and active civic engagement. The League never supports or opposes individual candidates. We do take stands on issues that we have studied. The League is open to all individuals over 18, both men and women. And for more information about the League, please visit our table out there or our website. So participating tonight in order of district and then alphabetical order are, for the countywide candidates, for Ottawa County Treasurer, we have Cheryl Clark and Ben Gensler. And the candidates for Ottawa County Commissioner for District 8 are David Lee Moran and Becky Patrick. And candidates for Ottawa County Commissioner for District 11 are Sarah Bejama and Dick Van Da. We did invite Sophia Rodi and Allison Midima and Keith Cortez, but they were not able to make it tonight. Our timekeeper is former League of Holland Area President Paula Lewison. And our videographer is the lead for our observer corps, Don Schiel. And our career is Joanne, Joanne Patterson. So now at this time, everyone, please turn off cameras and cell phones and other electronic communication devices. No cameras or recorders are permitted, other than those authorized by the League. This program will be recorded and available for viewing in a few days at LWVHolland.org and on our YouTube channel. The video is the property of the League of Women Voters of Holland Area. Neither video clips nor audio clips may be copied or edited. We have given candidates permission to use the link to the video in their campaign materials if they choose to. And we ask that you please refrain from reaction as the candidates are speaking and applaud when they're finished with their four-minute statement. So since we have a very short board here, I'm going to ask you all to come up when it's your turn. And we will start with the countywide candidates for Treasurer. Cheryl Clark first.
I always tell people that I'm not used to speaking in public because I'm a bean counter, not a professional speaker. I am Cheryl Clark and I am your Ottawa County Treasurer. I was born and raised in Grand Haven and have lived in Ottawa County for most of my life, married to my husband, my best friend, who loved my life, Joe, for 33 years. And we have two sons in their late twenties and still living at home, which we're hoping they have girlfriends now and we're hoping to believe in. Just a fun fact about me, so when I, after high school, I went to Muskegon Business College, now Baker College, and I got a two-year diploma in word processing. Now, that is no longer around, and it was not very popular after I graduated either. So I started working for the county and I went to environmental health. I was there for a couple of years, and then I went into the treasurer's office. And after working in the treasurer's office, I was encouraged to go back and get my bachelor's degree. And so I went to Cornerstone University and I did their accelerated program, which was, I did it in two years. And I ended up with a degree of three-point, or a grade point average of 3.87 while working full-time and raising my two kids. So I'm proud of that. That's just a little fun fact about me. So I am the only Ottawa County Treasurer candidate who has an advanced certificate in public funds and investment management. And I am the only one who has been actually investing public funds and managing them. I am also the, I have 32 years of experience managing public funds. Nine years was at Robinson Township as the treasurer there. And 32 years in the county treasurer's office, I'm sorry, 23 years in the county treasurer's office, 15 of those years as the chief deputy treasurer. I have served under four different Ottawa County Treasurers, and I have learned valuable lessons from each of them. And I have to say, I don't know how many of you may know, but Eunice Farim was the first county treasurer who hired me. And then I worked under Mary Richardson and Brad Slaw and Amanda Price. I am the only county treasurer candidate who has worked in the treasurer's office and knows all the laws that we need to follow and to do everything that we need to do because our office is 90% state mandated functions. We have to do whatever the state tells us we have to do with all of the laws. And I serve on seven different county commissions and in my role as the treasurer. I have also helped taxpayers avoid foreclosure. And one of the ways that I did that this year was I went around to homes that were facing foreclosure and the foreclosure deadline was on a Monday at 5:30. I went out on a Saturday before foreclosure, went to these homes. One of the homes that I went to, I met with the homeowner there, and he proceeded to tell me all the financial hardships they've been having, the issues that they've been having. And I said, well, it's a good thing that you were home when I came because now I have what you need to get a year's extension, and I promise I will sign off on that as your Ottawa County Treasurer. I believe that it was because of all my experience that I have that I have, was appointed to be the treasurer by the committee, the selection committee, and when Amanda Price retired. And also speaking of Amanda Price, she has endorsed me, along with Brad Slaw, former Ottawa County Treasurer, sorry, and Luke Neeran and Roger Victory and Bill Heisenberg.
All right, our next candidate for Ottawa County Treasurer is Ben Gensler. And I neglected to say, when you see the stop, go ahead and finish your sentence.
Okay.
The rest of you, something about that.
It's not mine. Where's your vote?
Yeah, it's mine.
That's okay. Yes, it's a very short board. I see some familiar faces in the room here, but for those of you I have not yet to meet, my name is Ben Gensler and I'm running for Ottawa County Treasurer. Our family resides in the city of Grand Haven. My wife Holly and I are high school sweethearts, started dating when we were 16, 23 years ago. We just celebrated our 15-year anniversary last month. My wife Holly works at Rosie Mound. We're both of my children attended elementary school. My daughter is 14, starting high school next year, and my son is 11 and he's in middle school. As chief banker and custodian of all county funds, it is essential and proven leader who values honesty, integrity, and transparency above all else as elected to public office. Considering we are now the fastest-growing county in the state, I am of the belief that those who represent us as elected officials should come to the table with a skill set that best represents the growing needs of the community. As a certified financial manager, I provide comprehensive financial planning, asset management, and investment advisory services to families and businesses across West Michigan. I graduated from the University of Michigan with a bachelor's and a master of business administration and would bring almost two decades of private sector leadership experience to public office. My family and I are deeply committed to community service. As a family, we regularly volunteer for several nonprofit organizations, and I also serve on two county boards, the West Michigan Planning Commission and the Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy Committee. I know that one's a mouthful. As Michigan's fastest-growing county, I believe it's necessary to bring a combination of private sector and public service experience to meet the growing needs of the community. As an experienced manager with a proven track record in strategic planning, project management, and process improvement, I plan to bring innovative transformation, efficiency, and proficiency to the treasurer's office. For many, their family home will be the largest investment made throughout their lifetime. I believe the treasurer should play a leading role in educating homeowners on how to manage increasing living costs and fluctuation in housing barriers, both of which are highly correlated to foreclosure rates. Ensuring the treasurer's office has the tools in place to reduce foreclosure rates during times of economic contraction is challenging but not impossible. Amidst the active litigation against the treasurer's office, I plan to protect property rights and will work diligently to reduce foreclosure rates by enhancing and improving access to financial literacy tools and educational resources. As one of Michigan's fastest-growing counties, we must consider how population growth will affect land use planning, planning, infrastructure needs, workforce development, government services, housing, and economic opportunity. Local government does play a key role in these development initiatives, but it also, it's also important to consider the limited role of government and how that limited role should support a free-market economy through deregulation, reduced taxation, and the protection of individual liberties. While we must work to attract new business investment and promote tax policy that incentivizes economic development, it is equally important that we respect the historic identity of Ottawa County. In this way, we ensure our local economy continues to attract hard-working, talented people who aim to be active members of society and wish to realize the American dream. In my opinion, the treasurer's office has an intrinsic responsibility to provide strategic support to the master planning efforts of our individual municipalities. For too long, there's been a disconnect, which has left many communities at a disadvantage. Opening channels of communication and building lasting relationships with city and township leadership will better serve the general economic development needs of our residents. With a unique combination of both private sector and public service experience, I believe I'm best suited to partner with key stakeholders to rebuild public confidence across county government with integrity, transparency, and full accountability to you, the residents of Ottawa County. My name is Ben Gensler and I'm running for Ottawa County Treasurer. Thank you.
All right, next up, we've got candidates for Ottawa County Commissioner for District 8. First is David Lee Moran.
Good evening. My name is David Lee Moran, 44-year resident of Allendale Township. I currently run Moran Motor Machine for 30 years in spring. I'm also a farmer, husband, father, grandfather, and great-grandfather. That makes me smile. Grandkids, great-grandkids are good. Why am I here? I will tell you this, I have been a four-year trustee for Allendale Township, for the people of Allendale, because I found out, because of the experience I had in a different county, that good governments affects everybody that lives there. And when things are not done properly, it can cost you lots of money. I found out that if you had the right name and had enough money, you could do just about anything in the right county. That's not what my good government is, okay? My vision of what a good government, government is, everybody should be treated equally. I don't care how much money you got or don't have, okay? I don't care what your last name is. I don't care what your gender is. If you're an American citizen, your government should represent you and respect and serve you the same. The laws are needed to be dealt with the same to each individual. There's no special preference, no special treatment, which brings me to where we are There are some good things that have happened in the last two years, but I warned some of them when they took over because I knew what the old school was, because I had to go all the way to the Supreme Court of the state of Michigan to fight what the old school was. So I'm willing to fight government because when it's wrong, it's wrong. And I warned them, I said, now, when you do these things, make sure you don't become your enemy. You have taken your seat, the people have entrusted you with this position. Now, don't become that which you removed. I'm here to tell you, from where I stand, they've done just that. And I think they've even gone a step further with some of the declarations that have been made by the Ottawa County GOP requiring Judeo-Christian candidates. If you aren't Judeo-Christian enough, you don't get to be vetted by the GOP. I have a problem. I will stand up for everybody's religious rights and freedoms, not just a certainty. You agree with your own. I have fought many battles. I care about truth. I care about my neighbors and I care about the future for my great-grandkids. I don't believe we elect kings and queens to rule. We need to get back to electing servants to service. I am a servant in heart. I can serve all. I can respect all. One of the things I claim is I'm a common sense, constitutional conservative. People say, what's common sense? Common sense is this, being a farmer, when I want to grow, harvest corn, I plant corn seed. When I want to harvest wheat, I plant wheat seed. Common sense will dictate what you're going to get depending on what you're sold. I want to sell good things. I believe all people of Ottawa County should be heard. I believe all should be respected and all should be represented. And at the county level, on that board, every one of those 11 people that sit there represent a vast majority of Ottawa County, they deserve to be heard. Having rules to stop certain ones from speaking is all. You can have good debate, vigorous debate. I applaud that. That's what, you want 11 people that come up with 11 different ideas and then implement what's best for this community. It's not my way or the highway. We don't rule by majority of leadership. Thank you.
Okay, next up is candidate for Ottawa County Commissioner, District 8, Becky Patrick.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Becky Patrick, running to represent Allendale Township as county commissioner. I'd like to do a couple of things with you in these few minutes. First, I'd like to talk a little bit about me and what I stand for because that's why you're here, to find out about us as candidates. And second, I'd like to talk a little bit about you and me and all of us and our role as voters in this upcoming election. So first, why should you vote for me? There's two reasons. I'm qualified and I have a vision for serving the law. My first qualification is that I care about county government, and I've been working effectively with others of both parties for over two years now to help bring back some reason and some change. Since January of 2023, I've attended more than 70 county commission meetings. I founded or led, together with others, four different grassroots groups dedicated to restoring good governance to Ottawa County, and I started a newsletter to explain commission activities to county residents. The bottom line is, I care and I care enough to use my skills and abilities to do something about it. My second qualification is that I understand government and I understand leadership. I was the regional director for the Michigan Departments of Environmental Quality and Natural Resources, and I have a deep understanding of the limits and the authority of government. So what's my vision for service? Well, first, I will champion trust and fiscal responsibility. Officials earn people's trust when they enthusiastically follow the rule of law, when they avoid conflicts of interest, when they use transparent policies in a predictable manner to make their decisions, when they work together in good faith in a collegial manner. These things are not difficult, but they are critical to trust and fiscal responsibility, and I will make them a priority. Second, I'll support community health services because they affect the quality of life for every person in Ottawa County. I intend to repair the relationship with our Department of Public Health, and I also intend to support mental health services because one in every five adults in the United States has a mental health diagnosis. Third, I will support and seek to expand the work being done on groundwater shortage issues in Allendale Township. We're disproportionately affected by that in Allendale, and the reality is, having adequate and safe drinking water supplies is not an option, it's a necessity. I'd like to end by challenging all of us to think about the roles that we can and we should play in ensuring we get the kind of government that we really want. How our elected leaders operate is as important as what they do. They are not mutually exclusive. We need both good behavior and good policy. So I encourage you, examine the tone that your elected leaders, of those who want to be your elected leaders, will set if they get into leadership positions. Ask them, are they willing to meet and engage with the people that they represent? And having done that, I then encourage you to vote. Thank you, League of Women Voters, for making this event possible. Thank you to the other participants for making yourselves available. Thank you to all of you for taking the time to be coming forward, and I hope to earn your vote and your trust and serve you in Ottawa County Commission.
All right, next we have the candidates for Ottawa County Commissioner for District 11, and first is Sarah Bejama.
Hi, I'm Sarah Bejama. So I'm running for county commissioner here, a couple of different reasons. A little bit about me, if you guys don't know me, I grew up in Coopersville. I worked here when I was little. My family was always very involved with things. When I graduated, I went to Michigan State, got a degree in business and German, actually, which I was never, but that's okay. And I worked in banking for 20 years. During my tenure in banking, I did a lot at Chase. I was a branch manager for a while, went over to Fifth Third where I did business development in the commercial division. It gave me a lot of experience working with large corporations, counties, townships, and different things like that, helping to advise on investing funds and various things like that. And then I was head of treasury for a small bank out of the Alma-Itapah area for a couple of years. And then last summer, I decided to kind of change my career path a little bit, and I'm now doing commercial real estate, which still keeps me in a lot of the same things that I was doing before, just a little bit more focused. But what it also gives me is time, so I have the time to get involved with running for county commissioner because it does take time. But it also helps fill a passion that I have. I have always been very passionate about what happens in my community and what's being done. I want to make sure that things are done the right way, there aren't mistakes being made because of carelessness. And I, I really think that processes matter and how we do things matter. It's funny, when I went to college, I had this little sticker on my, I had a filing cabinet because I used to print stuff, but on there, it said, "Question everything." And it's sort of a motto that I always looked by. I don't know, maybe it was growing up in the 80s as a little kid where everybody was afraid of the man and things going on, but it really, so I've used it in my adult life a lot, in business and when I'm making decisions or looking at different things, I always go back to, okay, why? Question everything. Even if it sounds good, why does it sound good? What's the impact of it? If we cut one thing, what is the domino effect from? It's really important to ask questions when you're in government and you're making decisions for other people. It's important to know the reasons why you're doing something and why you would not do something. And while things can sometimes look really good, surface level, it's always really important to know the fine details of it, the part that nobody ever reads on the bottom, the fine print. So that's something that I really would be focused on, making sure that we're following policies, we're not upsetting things anymore, and that people really won't even know who I am after I'm elected because the government will be running so smoothly that everyone will just be happy, be like, oh, it was that one girl. Anyway, I'm Sarah Bejama. It's really hot, so I'm going to cut the shirt.
Okay, our last candidate for this evening is candidate for Ottawa County Commissioner for District 11, Dick Van Da.
Your body head pulled off in time for just a minute. I've got this thing from Allison Bejama, and it reminds me of what she's gone through. She lost her mother in a traffic accident a few months, a few weeks ago. And I'd just like to take a second to offer a prayer for her, so if you wouldn't be willing, please pray with me. Lord, we lift up Allison and her family in this time of grief. We pray that you will send your spirit to comfort them, to guide them, to give them the assurance that you are there as they walk through this tough time. Lord, despite our differences, she is a child of God, and we care enough to wish the best for her. We ask this in Jesus' name, amen. My name is Dick Van Da. How many fun facts have we got time for here? What did I do to my elbow? I fell in the garage and fractured a bone in my elbow. Another fun fact, Sarah's son is dating my granddaughter. That's small county politics. I was born and raised in Norton Shores, got a degree in political science in Hope College. My wife and I have lived in Towne Beach Township now for 20 years. We've been married for 52 years, five kids, 14 grandkids. I know, I'm a minister and there's a lot of hot air. I get so distracted. I spent 27 years as a federal agent, special agent with IRS Criminal Investigation. Yes, your worst nightmare in a company with a gun. I also spent 26 years in the Navy Reserve as an intelligence officer and a counterterrorism analyst. At the age of 56, God finally grew me up enough he could send me to seminary. I became an ordained minister and I've served churches in Granville, Compton, and Grand Haven. I'm now semi-retired from that, and I just can't seem to stay retired, so now I'm running for politics. Again, because I used to serve, I have served six years on the Kenwood Hills School Board, three years as president. I'm running because I have been somewhat gassed at the way the county has been run for the past year and a half. I'm not going to go into a great deal of detail because a lot of that's already in print and on tape in a lot of different places. What I will say, and what I'd like to talk about for just a couple of minutes tonight, is some things I'd like to do when I get on the board. The board needs to change some policies. First of all, I want the board to rearrange the schedule for their business meeting so that the agenda and any agenda changes and approvals are done before community input. I was there early in May when people railed, and I was one of them, railed for an hour against the 60% pay increase, only to hear, after it was all over, that it had been secretly removed from the agenda that morning. That was very disrespectful, as far as I was concerned, to waste our time like that. Another thing I would like to see is that all commissioners are respected, all are given a voice. The current situation has been, I don't know if it still is, but it was at one time, that if you wanted, if you were, as a commissioner, if you wanted something from the county administrator, you'd have to go through a special committee. Jill Moss got to approve who got to ask for what and who received what. That's, no, that's not the way it goes. Every commissioner is equal. Every commissioner has a right to access the county administration office for information. Another thing I want to see, even though there are political differences, I want to see a fair distribution of committee assignments. I don't want people discriminated against because they happen to be in the minority and they don't get some of the commission assignments that they would like. Thank you. 30 seconds. I'm running because one of my philosophies in life is to leave the world where the better place than I found it. I believe that we can restore good government to Ottawa County. I echo what Sarah said, I want to see a good county government that nobody pays attention to us because we do the right thing in the right way at the right time. And having said that, I wish you all comfort and the air-conditioned. Thank you.
All right, yeah, let's give him a round of applause. Thank you, thank you to everyone for joining us tonight, and we hope you've gained insight into the candidates' positions from their statements. You can learn more about these and other candidates by visiting vote411.org. Many candidates have responded to additional questions about their candidacy on vote411.org. And a reminder that the video of this forum will be available on our website and YouTube channel in a few days. Copyright ownership of the recordings resides with the League of Women Voters. And most of all, remember to vote on Tuesday, August 6th. The polls are open at 7:00 a.m. The polls are open at 7:00 a.m. and close at 8:00 p.m. Additionally, you may now vote in person during the early voting period, which started on Saturday and runs through Sunday, August 4, or send your absentee ballot in. Many of us have already voted absentee. So more information about your voting options can be found on 411, or at your local clerk's office, or at michigan.gov/vote.
One of the early voting places, one of the early voting places is right across the highway, Vote in Township.
Vote in Township, fantastic, yes. And we've got maps to those locations and hours as well. So our website also has information on voting and elections. So again, thank you for attending tonight's event, and don't forget to vote, and you can now move out into air conditioning. And we have several tables as well in the reserved section if you do want to sit down and order some food or beverages. So thank you again, bye-bye.